All right, folks, it's 5:00 after, so we're going to go ahead and get started. My name is Ephraim Bicer. I'm the Director of Education for the Eastern Neighborhood Democratic Club, and I'm trying to welcome all of you to our candidate forum. I'll say a few remarks before introducing, like every other kind of partner club introduce themselves. First off, you know, this, I'm really excited about this forum, and I'm really excited from all of these candidates. For a number of reasons, education and higher education are going to be very important in the very immediate future. Our candidates, the candidates who you might hear from today may be tasked in a few months' time with thinking about what a reopening plan could look like for the school district and community college board, like community college and city college. They could be thinking about how it is that we support working parents who have to figure out childcare for their children while they also try to do their jobs. They will be thinking about how it is we re-skill the thousands of workers in this city who've lost their jobs as a result of the economic impact of COVID. And I just can't think of positions that'll be more important right now. They're going to have to deal with budget crises that result from the shortfalls that result that are just a fact of the economic impact, and less, fewer revenue going to the city and the state, as well as the state and the city having to make priorities around where they spend their dollars. So I have two little kids. They're not quite in the public school system yet, but I want them to be. And I want people, the people we elect this cycle will be the school board members when my kids start public school. And so I'm really thinking a lot about who we're going to be electing this cycle. As far as our agenda today, we will hear first from each of the participating clubs, a little bit about their club, and what excites them about this cycle. We'll then hear from our city college board candidates first. Each candidate will have two minutes to speak. After every candidate speaks, we will go through some Q and A, which you can put in the Q and A or chat function. Put your questions in the Q and A if you could. Will Matt, we'll be monitoring the Q and A, and each will ask up to three questions, maybe four if we have time, for each position. And each candidate will have 30 seconds to respond to the question. After the city college, we'll go to the school board, SIFUSD board candidates, same format. And then when that is over, because our club is not having a District III forum, we have a couple, a few of the District III supervisory candidates who'll also get to say a few words about their candidacy. So we'll stop there, and I will talk about ENDC at the end, but I'd love to let our partner clubs, Willie B. Kennedy Democratic Club, Edwin M. Lee, Asia-Pacific Democratic Club, and United Democratic Club all say a few words about themselves. Maybe we'll start with Linda, and then go to Selena, and then to Nima, talk about, say a few words about their clubs.
Yeah, hi. I want to say good evening to everyone. I am Linda Fadiki Richardson. Today, I'm representing the Willie B. Kennedy Democratic Club in San Francisco. The late Willie B. Kennedy was an African-American woman, one of the greatest leaders in San Francisco. She was one of the longest-running elected officials, a great community leader. She fought for equity, and education is central. Unfortunately, today, we have a huge disparity in terms of education of African-Americans, Latinos, and people of color in San Francisco that is unacceptable. So we are here. We've been upholding her legacy. We believe in collaboration. And I just want to take this opportunity to thank Mr. Bruce Haji. He's always reaching out to DWBK, and we've had a very successful collaboration, and we look forward to collaborating with all the great organizations that are supporting this particular forum. I want to state that Willie B. Kennedy, we're welcoming your partnership with us as well. Great people of the club. Dr. Toymosis is our president. Dr. Veronica Hanekat is the vice president, and a host of other great leaders in San Francisco. So I want to say congratulations to the officials that are running. And please, education is very important to San Francisco and very important to DWBK, and we are going to hold everyone's speech to the fire that you represent the constituents, and you do the right thing. And so thank you for being involved with its participation.
Thanks, Linda. Selena?
Thanks, Ephraim. Hi, everyone. My name is Selena. I'm the president of the Edwin M. Lee Asian-Pacific Democratic Club. Thank you first to UDC, ENDC, and the Willie B. Kennedy Democratic Club for partnering with us on this event. I think Ephraim said it, but you know, this is an incredible time to be talking about these issues. So thank you to all of the candidates who are here today. A little bit about our club. We are formally known as the Asian-Pacific Democratic Club, and we are one of the longest-serving API Democratic Clubs west of the Mississippi, and really rechartered in 2018 after Mayor Lee passed. Our mission has really been to carry on his legacy of continuing, you know, the API pipeline of leadership, engaging people in the community, and making sure that people are staying active in the democratic process. So thank you very much for having us here, and I'm really looking forward to the rest of the forum.
Nima, you want to go ahead?
Sure. Thanks. Thanks for giving us the floor. I want to echo everyone's sentiments. I'm very excited about the caliber of candidates that are running for these positions. I plan on having kids in San Francisco starting as soon as possible and getting married at the end of this month. So very vested interest in the development of our educational programs from childhood, early childhood education all the way through college. So I'm very excited to hear the candidates. I'm here representing the United Democratic Club. We're an inclusive and progressive group of Democrats that would believe that everyone should have a place in San Francisco. Our goal is to empower people citywide to drive change by educating, organizing, and building a bench of Democratic leaders in San Francisco by cultivating and nurturing grassroots activists. And here is a perfect example of where we can start doing that. And I'm looking forward to hearing what everyone has to say. So thanks for being here, and thanks for having us.
Thanks, Nima. And Bob, as I'm chatting, will you mind upgrading our city college board candidates to panelists? That would be excellent. So I'll just say a few words about the Eastern Neighborhood Democratic Club. We are a group of Democrats in the eastern neighborhoods of the city, which we define as supervisory districts 3, 6, and 10. It's everything from Fisherman's Wharf down to Viz Valley on the eastern side of the city. And we think a lot about the issues that face our city, especially since our neighborhoods, where we see the predominant amount of growth, where we see firsthand some of our most pressing issues on homelessness. And so we think holistically about how do we solve these problems, and how do we, as Democrats, help drive for change. We also very much care about engaging more people in the political process, especially people who have not been previously actively engaged in supporting candidates and ballot measures. So a huge part of what we do is try to engage more residents in our neighborhoods and try to be as collaborative as possible, especially when we talk about issues, whether it's quality of life, sustainability, transportation, economic and workforce development, and education. As we're getting all the candidates teed up to speak, I just want to say thank you to all of you for choosing to run. Also, we know this is probably not the type of campaign you all expected to have. You probably, we all would have expected to be in some room somewhere, getting a chance to hear from you in person, again, really a chance to feel and hear your passion. So we hope that you'll be able to bring the fire tonight in the couple of minutes that you have to speak. So with that-
I believe that's everybody except for Jeremiah Teeter. And so if I see that name pop up, I'll admit them in, but otherwise, let the show go on.
All right. I will be keeping track of time. Just in terms of order, we'll go Alan Wong, Aliyah, Tom, and Han. So if folks want to just prep themselves, that'll be our order. So Alan, your two minutes starts whenever you're ready.
Okay. Thank you, everybody, for having me. I'm Alan Wong, and I'm running for college board. A little bit about who's supporting me. I'm endorsed by the Alice Club, the Building Trades, as well as folks like Justin Jones, Rodney Fong, Fiona Ma, Phil Ting, David Chu, Sheriff Meemoto, Suzy Loftus, Raphael Adam, and Valley Brown, and a supermajority of the board supervisors, college board, and the Board of Education. I'm running because I want to ensure that working immigrants and families have opportunities as we move through COVID-19. I was born and raised in San Francisco, and my entire family went to city college. When my dad came to this country as an immigrant, he worked at a factory putting together software parts. After nine months into his job, he got laid off. And so after that, he went to city college to enroll in the ESL program there to improve his English comprehension. And is there that he learned about his culinary program. And that's how he was able to get a job for two decades as a local-to-hotel cook at the Grand High Unstocked, supporting my family and allowing us to live in the sunset. My mom took ESL classes there, and it enabled her to be able to be confident, be able to talk to family members. And for myself, as a high school student and later UC San Diego student, I took city college classes concurrently, and those classes helped me graduate from UC San Diego bachelor's degree when I was just 19 years old. Since then, I've continued my work in public service as a legislative aide. Last year, I worked on the legislation and supervisor Mars office to secure free city college for the next decade. I also worked with city college, Wame School, CYC, and many nonprofits in our neighborhood to expand city college into the west side of town rent-free by placing classes at public schools and nonprofits so that our neighborhood can get access to services. Today, my dad, like many other workers, has been laid off from his job like many other service sector workers. And so city college is that place of hope and opportunity where people will be able to get good jobs and pivot and find the workforce development that they need. And so that's what I believe that we should ensure that we do during this pandemic, to be ensuring that laid-off workers are able to get good jobs through workforce development for improving their English. And my approach to ensuring this is to, my approach to ensuring that every neighborhood is able to get resources from city colleges, ensuring that we take a high-road and collaborative approach.
All right. Thanks, Alan. Two minutes. Before Aliyah starts, just a reminder to folks, if you have questions that you'd like us to ask any of the candidates, please go ahead and put them in the Q and A, which is in the bottom, should be in the bottom section of your Zoom screen. All right. With that, Aliyah, your two minutes starts whenever you start talking. Thanks, Alan.
Hi, I'm Aliyah Chisti, a young Muslim woman born and raised in San Francisco in D11 by a single mother who worked very hard to make ends meet. I have dedicated my entire life to working in schools on policies that impact schools, all with the goal to make our educational system serve our vulnerable students better. I hold a master's in education policy from Columbia University, where my thesis focused on the crushing burden of student debt. I was nominated for a Fulbright Scholarship to teach in North Macedonia, and I have also served as a legislative aide to former supervisor Malia Cohen, where I drafted legislation to ban the box on private college applications, making San Francisco the first city in the nation to do so. Currently, I oversee the Free City Program at DCYF, where I have built a successful partnership between two very massive bureaucracies and oversee the entire $160 million budget for the program. This experience has taught me that we need to do more for our students. City College's role during and after the pandemic must be to continue being the people's college and fulfill its central role of increasing educational opportunities, especially for marginalized students. I will ensure that city colleges' resources reach every neighborhood through targeted outreach, addressing language barriers, and expanding the Student Ambassador Program. CCSF needs someone that has a demonstrated commitment to education. If elected, I will fight to have a permanent emergency grant program, invest in wraparound services, establish a jobs guarantee program with clear career pathways, and grow Free City so that it expands access. I will advocate at the local, state, and federal level and support philanthropic partnerships. I will ensure absolute transparency in my decision-making process. I'm proud to have the endorsements of AFT 2121, Alice B. Toklas Democratic Club, Board of Equalization member Malia Cohen, Supervisor Shimon Walton, Supervisor Fewer, Board of Education Commissioner Jenny Lamb, and Trustee Alex Randolph. I'd be proud to have your support. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Aliyah. I really appreciate it. Next up, we'll have Tom, Han, Jeremy, if he's on, and then Victor. So Tom, whenever you're ready.
Sure. Hi, everybody. Tom Timprano, great to be here with you and this phenomenal field. I am the current vice president of the City College Board of Trustees, and am really proud to have gone from being a community college student to the vice president of the board of the best community college in the country. I was elected in 2016, and since that time, we have accomplished a lot coming out of our accreditation crisis. We negotiated a 10-year MOU to fully fund the Free City College program for a decade. We had our accreditation reaffirmed for seven years. We negotiated contracts that raised faculty and staff salaries by double digits. We passed an $845 million bond this past March, which feels like it was three years ago, but was really just March, that is going to help us rebuild a lot of our facilities on our Ocean campus, but also our campuses in the Bayview and in the Tenderloin. I've been working closely with Supervisor Mar and stakeholders at City Hall, hat tip to Alan Wong, who's been working closely on this as well, on the Workforce Education Recovery Fund, which will help provide city funding for workforce programs, non-credit ESL programs, and social justice programs that have been defunded by our state funding formula. And I'm sure I'm going to get a lot more in there, but I am proud to have the support of Speaker Nancy Pelosi, our state treasurer Fiona Ma, our lieutenant governor Aleni Kounalakis, Assembly members Chu and Ting, Senator Weiner. It feels like you're just really, it's like a menu we list off with these. Eight members of the Board of Supervisors, Alice, the Building Construction Trades Council, the Sierra Club, the Tenants Union, and hopefully all the great organizations who put this forum together tonight. So looking forward to speaking with you all.
Thanks, Tom. Really appreciate it. I love all the candidates sticking with this time. We're doing great. It will give us some time for Q and A. So keep it up. Again, don't forget to put Q and A in the Q and A button, or you can type it in to Alex Wong, and Alex will make sure that we get those questions heard. So next up, we'll have Han, then Jeremy, Victor, and Jeanette. So Han, the floor is yours.
Thank you. I hope I don't mess up the timing here. Thank you all for having me here and for hosting this forum. My name is Han So, and I'm running for the Board of Trustees because it was access to education that really changed my family's life. I immigrated to the States when I was six years old. My mom, who's a college educator herself, grew up poor in the city of Longzhou in Gansu, China, which is where I was born. And she was the first in her family to go to college where she studied public health, and it was on a whim that she applied for a graduate program here in the States. And because of that, my dad and I, and then my two grandparents were able to come to this country on her visa. Five of us lived in a one-bedroom apartment. My parents shared the living, or the bedroom. My grandparents and I shared the living room. And like a lot of San Francisco families, immigrant families, it was my grandparents who took care of me while my dad worked to pay the rent, and my mom focused on getting her degree. I've spent my entire education in the public school system. And since graduating college, I've dedicated my life to working with API children and families and working to bridge the gap between black, brown, and API communities. My first job out of college was at the Asian Law Caucus, where I worked to bring services to low-income API Latinx students and families, undocumented youths, as well as incarcerated immigrants. As executive director of the San Francisco Democratic Party, I staffed the committee to develop the Black Agenda. And as currently an aide and supervisor, Haney's office, I've been focused particularly on bridging the gap between children, families, and city services, especially during this pandemic. City College is hugely important to our communities, especially to low-income working-class families. And as a trustee, I want to be able to bring my experience, my background, to make sure that during the pandemic and post-pandemic, city college will play a key role for the communities who've been most affected by the shutdown, to use the school as an opportunity to learn new skills and be able to change careers in the new economy. That also means accessibility for people in every neighborhood, especially underserved communities like Chinatown, the Tenderloin, Soma, Bayview, the Mission. It's going to be incredibly difficult a couple of years ahead for the city, especially for the school.
Thanks, Han.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Jeremy Teeter is not here. If he does show up, we will give him time to speak during the city college board section. So we'll skip right next to Victor. After Victor will be Jeanette, and after Jeanette, we'll have Chanel.
Great. Thanks, Ephraim. I'm a college professor running for the community college board. I'm also a former university senior administrator with over 15 years of professional experience in higher education, and it all started at a community college. I came here when I was 12 years old. Neither one of my parents even finished high school. We were actually quite poor growing up, and I had to make it through ESL classes and the public school system to become the first in my family to attend college. I became an EMT at the community college, and I started working on sorts of odd jobs to pay for school, later becoming a United States Army officer after volunteering for, after 9/11. Went on to get a PhD in political science against all odds. I taught at university level. I got involved in public service, and I became the chief of staff in the UC system. I've helped run universities. I have helped build university buildings. I've helped guide 20-year campus master plans, and I have directly comprehensive curriculum reviews and guided budgets in the hundreds of millions of dollars, which is all the things that city college desperately needs right now. In San Francisco, I've actually also directed the workforce development of mid-sized companies, probably up to 100,000 employees throughout the country, and locally over 500 employees. I've worked in development and fundraising, and I've always been a professor of political science, because I was always returned to teaching. Currently, I'm serving as the president of the San Francisco Veterans Affairs Commission. I'm also the co-chair of the Resolutions Committee for the California Democratic Party, and I'm getting married in September. My fiancee and I live on the east side of San Francisco, so we're all very well aware of the issues and everyday problems that the Eastern Democratic Club has been organizing around and trying to make a meaningful difference. To answer the two questions that you provided us with the last 30 seconds that I have here, city college role during and after the pandemic must be one of healing, recovery, equity building. In San Francisco, we have long faced systemic inequities and perpetuate, that perpetuate drastic economic differences, and education, for me, has always been the great equalizer. City College really has the potential to lift thousands of property by putting them on the path to academic success and train workers who need a good paying job, maintain community, engage folks with lifelong education opportunities, and break down those barriers with a lot of the classes that we offer. I plan to do that with a decentralized budget and a class system where the centers are incentivized to increase their revenue with higher enrollment.
Thanks, Victor. Appreciate it. We'll get some Q and As as well. All right. Next will be Jeanette, Chanel, and then Anita.
Hi, everyone. I'm Jeanette Quick. I am an attorney, and I focus on consumer protection and financial health at a local startup. I'm also a city college student, and I am running because I am so disturbed by what I saw as a student with quality classes being slashed in the college on the brink of failure. I was previously a senior advisor to two United States senators, and I wrote many of the financial regulations currently in place today, and I've investigated for-profit colleges and abusive student loan practices across the country. I'm running because I think we need someone with financial management experience to get this college back on track and to increase the college's transparency and reporting to the public. City College's roles during and after the pandemic must be to provide quality education online and to increase enrollment to stabilize the funding of the college. City College needs to start using online lectures. It currently has online classes, and I've used them, but they're pretty terrible. They don't really use lectures. They're basically glorified bulletin boards. The technology at City College right now is worse than what Cal used when I went there in the 90s. I will put pressure on tech companies, particularly those that claim to be interested in racial justice, to donate their products and services to do this. Google can donate Chromebooks. Salesforce can donate cloud services. We need to figure out how to do more with less at City College and increase inefficiencies in enrollment during and after the pandemic. My approach to ensuring city college's resources reach every San Francisco neighborhood includes improving the online environment, also assessing the usage of its campuses. We can do better at promoting the existing campuses, evaluating which neighborhoods are underserved, and increasing the services for marginalized communities and undocumented immigrants. My mother is a Vietnamese immigrant, and I know how hard it can be for immigrants to get an education in this country. I will fight to create a strategic plan to stabilize the funding of City College through public-private partnerships and ensure that it's on track to keep its accreditation. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeanette. Next, we have Chanel, and then Anita.
Yeah, thank you so much. Thank you for having all of us. It's just so amazing to see so many candidates running. My name is Chanel Williams. I currently serve as president of the Board of Trustees and have been working at City College for the past eight years, first as a student organizer with the Safe City College Coalition, and then was elected to the board in 2016. Since serving on the board, I know Vice President Timprano covered a lot of what we've done, but we've done a lot. And I know there's a number of challenges ahead, but the fact that we've been able to pass a major facilities bond is actually going to improve not only our campuses, it's going to improve our registration systems, it's going to help us improve our technology. The fact that during this crisis, we've been able to disperse $4 million of cash payments, as well as Chromebooks and other things that students need during this crisis, makes me really proud. We also, in addition, as Vice President Ronald mentioned, our Free City College program, which is now going to open up the door to all San Franciscans to take classes for free, and I want to be able to expand that to all of our workers in San Francisco. I really feel like City College is the jewel that we have to protect in this city that really is a pathway for all students that have different goals, whether that be training for a new career, whether that be transferring to a four-year institution, whether that be just getting a certificate and improving a skill set and wanting some enrichment and building community with your neighbors. I really believe in City College. That's why I've spent eight years of my life working on this issue, and I know we have a number of challenges ahead related to the state of COVID-19 and what we're seeing at the state with the deferrals and a number of things that we're facing during this climate. But given the experience I've had on the board and the fight that we've been able to come through with our accreditation and keeping the college open, I feel it's really important to have that experience at the board level, and I'm committed to continue doing the hard work. So thank you, and I look forward to all the questions.
Thanks, Chanel. I got two screens. You've got to move my, I don't know if you've ever had that with the mouse. We got one last candidate unless Jeremy has joined. Anita, if the floor is yours.
Thank you. My name is Anita Martinez, and mine is not an immigrant family because we've been here for 20,000 years. I'm a Mestiza with Navajo and Comanche roots. I grew up in a two-room, not two-bedroom, two-room house without running water. So we had to heat all our water up, pump our water outside, and heat our water outside for all that we needed to do. The thing that led me to where I am today is my community college education, which I fell into. I won a large scholarship, the largest in the county that they've ever seen, but nobody bothered to tell me about going to college. So I went to my local community college, and from there, the rest is history. I've worked 28 years at City College at San Francisco as a teacher, as a dean of students, and as a vice chancellor of instruction. So I know how City College operates. I know the regulations, the policies, and all the rest of that. I am ready on day one to read an agenda and understand every word that's in that agenda and to be critical of the items that are in that agenda. I'm running because students, faculty, and community asked me to run because City College is in terrible shape. It has three years of an overspent budget that needs to be fixed. It is cutting classes left and right. The students need 13% of the faculty are ESL, but they cut 35% of the jobs in ESL, and that cuts classes for immigrant students, and that's an awful thing. About the pandemic, during the pandemic, fix registration. It's frustrating students. Anticipate whether any in-person students or services are needed, and then provide them. Plan for a return. Prepare services. Prepare classes. You can't do that overnight. You have to prepare the curriculum ahead of time. After, implement a strategic plan for returning based on data and science recommendation. Be sure the college is fully and competently staffed. Use counseling and matriculation staff for a smooth return and provide necessary services. Approach about providing services to the entire community, like I said, quit cutting classes. These classes, and especially in non-credit and older adults, they generate more money than they cost, and they can be used to preserve instruction at all of the other campuses. I know that having supervised non-credit. Commit to keeping all of the campuses open, staffing them.
Thanks, Anita.
All right. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you all so much for sticking on time. That means we have time for some Q and A, which I think is what I hope a lot of people will do. So just as a quick reminder, people have submitted questions. We won't be able to get to all of them, but we have some questions in the Q and A that we'll ask. Every candidate will have 30 seconds to say, kind of, it sticks out to them first. And we will use the same order that we went in, except we'll start somewhere else in the list with each question. So with this first question, Tom, you will go first. We'll go in the same order as we did for this. as we did for this. First question, many of you have talked about all these great programs to help serve students. We want to make sure that, how do we make sure that City College tuition remains free, that it's, City College is not a financial burden? How do we ensure that we can keep City College free and financially solvent? And we'll go in order, will be Tom, Han, and then Victor.
That's a tough 30-second answer, but I was a part of the team that negotiated the 10-year MOU to make the Free City program free, have fought for that program, and will continue to fight for that program. In terms of making sure we're financially feasible, City College has a revenue crisis. On the time I've been on the board, we've secured $1 billion between our bond, Free City, and other programs for City College. We need $1 billion more. We need to keep fighting for funding at the state, federal, and local level. I've been doing that for four years and look forward to doing it hopefully for four years more.
Great, thanks. Han, Victor, then Jeanette.
Great. Thank you. Like Tom said, you know, City College has and was in a situation of financial solvency issue well before the pandemic, and it's only going to become more difficult. I think for me, you know, like Tom said, we have to make sure we find more revenue. I'm deeply supportive of Prop 16 to get state funding. I don't know how much we rely on the federal government at this point. Knock on wood what happens in November. But in particular, I think it's important that when we talk about budget, that we make sure we're taking care of classes and resources for low-income immigrant families because those are the folks that are hit hardest by this pandemic, and they should be a priority in budget.
Thanks, Han. Next, we'll have Victor, Jeanette, then Chanel.
Thanks, Afrim. I'm on mute now. I see this as a two-way problem. On the one, the end of it really is that City College is not receiving sustainable funding, so the thing that I would really focus on, it would be a thrite piiteite way of getting funding coming in, turning City College into a residential campus by building housing for faculty, students, and classified staff, using a build-own-to-operate model to leverage equity. Housing is the single biggest expense and the single biggest detractor from gaining education, so we should tackle that first and right away now that we have the bond money. I would also expand the Workforce and Economic Recovery Fund by working with city and state partnerships, but also using an endowed chair model with local companies to build pipelines for education and employment. And lastly, elected officials to change the state funding formula.
All right, guys, this is great. Really appreciate you all honoring this 30 seconds. Jeanette, Chanel, then Anita.
Yeah, so I think increasing public funding from the federal government, the state and city, is critical. One way to do that is to increase enrollment, transfers of graduation rates and credit classes. I think that there's a lot that needs to be done to improve the graduation rates of the Black and Latinx communities and to provide targeted services to make sure they stay on track. I also think that expanding foundational support and private funding sources is really critical. That's something that hasn't really been talked a lot about in the discussions about City College in the past, but City College has one of the smallest endowments in the country among large community colleges and should really develop an entire fundraising campaign targeted at alumni.
Thanks, Jeanette.
Yeah.
Appreciate it. Next, so Chanel, Anita, and then we'll go back to the top. Alan and Alia, you'll go last.
Yeah, thank you for this question. I mean, our base funding is really based on our enrollment and our apportionment, and as it was mentioned before, our revenue has significantly gone down over the years. I mean, City College, in terms of our finances, has actually been in a crisis for the past 10 years, and so really looking at the structural issues at City College, the financial controls, as well as like where are we spending the bulk of our funding, where 94% of our general fund is spent in compensation, which is a structural issue that, on the board, we have to dig into that and we have to address, which we've been trying to do. I would also look at the progressive revenue measures that we're seeing, like schools and communities first. The Heroes Act at the federal level that Pelosi is pushing is going to bring some dollars to the
Thanks, Chanel.
Thank you.
All right, Anita, Alan, and Alia.
Okay, support Prop 16 and the wealth taxes. That's number one. Non-credit is free. And beyond that, make sure we don't cut classes that generate more revenue than they cost.
Okay, short and sweet, to the point. Alan, you're up.
I have the experience working to gain funding for the college. At the Board of Supervisors, as a legislative aide, I worked to draft the Free City College Agreement in collaboration with some of our trustees here to secure funding for a decade for Free City College. Currently, in Supervisor Mars' office, I'm working to draft the Workforce Education and Recovery Fund. We need to increase enrollment by offering quality programs, by helping, also helping people enroll that may not necessarily have access or have to go through the digital divide by ensuring that we have enrollment options for people of different languages and also in-person enrollment options.
Thanks, Alan.
Thank you.
Alia, bring us home.
Thank you. So Free City only covers tuition, which is $46 a unit. That's a very small portion of the total cost of attendance. So there's actually a Senate bill, Senate Bill 291, we need to be advocating for that to be passed to address total cost of attendance for students. We need to grow enrollment, and we need to make sure that enrollment isn't based on FTES but on headcount so we can get our community colleges the adequate funding that they need.
Great. Thank you all so much. We've got time, I think, for two more questions. This next round of questions, we will start with Jeanette. We're in the middle of the worst economic crisis since the Great Depression. We know that the impact, economic impact of the pandemic is not evenly distributed, that a number of industries feel this, and jobs feel this way more. What is your proposal or your vision for how City College gets all of these affected workers re-employed as soon as they're able to get back and the economy is spinning again? So again, we'll start with Jeanette. We'll go Jeanette, Chanel, Anita.
Yeah, so something I think City College should do is focus on working with the state and unemployment office to get information about Free City to people in San Francisco when they're filing for unemployment, to understand that they have resources to apply for, or to enroll at City College to get more job skills. I think that's one important factor, is working with other agencies to increase knowledge, also to create more high-demand classes at City College. So for example, General Assembly is this, is a coding private, privately instituted set of coding classes. It's very popular with tech community, and we should have something like that at City College that addresses a pipeline and getting people skills that are important for the workforce of the future.
Appreciate it. Yeah. Well, Chanel, Anita, and then back to the top with Alan.
Yeah, I agree. Public-private partnerships are great, and we actually have examples of this with our cybersecurity program. We have an apprenticeship model that's connected to the cybersecurity learning, so I like the combination of having folks in the classroom but also getting paid while they're learning because we know that folks have families, they're dealing with food and housing insecurity, and if we can find a way to give folks funding so they can be able to go back to classes because we know we live in the most expensive city in the world, you know, folks often look at that as being a barrier. So how do we get folks paid? And I think that can come through some public-private partnerships and as well students' first schedule, looking at the high-demand classes and being able to pivot to those offerings, which again is a structural.
Thanks, Chanel. All right, Anita, your turn on economic recovery.
Okay. Short-term non-credit classes can be put together very quickly. We've done it in the past. I've done it in the past. What we also have to do is we also have to reestablish and reinvigorate some of our short-term certificate programs in non-credit. They just need to be staffed. So the solutions are there. We just need to put them out, and we need to allow faculty to suggest what some of those solutions are.
Thank you. Next, we'll have Alan, Alia, then Tom.
My dad has been laid off from his job since March, and that's why I'm especially motivated to run for this position. I have experience as a trustee on the Joint SEIU in Education and Employer Fund, working with employers, unions, education institutions, and employers to ensure that we have high-road collaboration to getting jobs by increasing a pipeline and working with employers to train the workers that they need to upgrade their skills. Also, I believe in condensing workforce programs so that we can get people into jobs ASAP because people can't wait to go for a one-year or two-year program and forming partnerships.
Thanks, Alan.
Thank you.
Great. Alia, Tom, then Han.
Thank you. So I just want to echo what everybody's even said. We need to invest in non-credit classes to have some of our training programs revived. We need to have apprenticeship training programs, and I want to see more skin in the game from different businesses where we're providing training to students and they're getting employed there, so I'd like to have more skin in the game from them and collaboration with the academic senate and how to create clear career pathways for people that are enrolling for training.
Thanks. Alia, Tom, Han, then Victor.
Sure. We have an, we have entire sectors out of work. I've owned a bar for seven years. More than half my bartenders are already enrolling in City College classes. We have a lot of the programs those folks need, but we need to be investing in new programs. I've been championing our Cannabis Studies degree, which launches this fall. We also have a Cannabis Studies Extension Program, which is kind of a quick build, get it up and out and get folks trained quickly. We need to continue to work with industry partners to see what the jobs that folks will need coming out of COVID will be and quickly get those programs up.
Thanks, Tom, Han, and then Victor.
Thank you. Yeah, there absolutely needs to be public-private partnerships, but I also think there's opportunities for public partnerships with the city. I worked on in our office an overpaid executive tax that's supposed to generate up to $200 million for hiring healthcare workers. I want to see those workers come through City College programs. I also think there's an opportunity to have partnerships regionally and especially with other schools. We saw SF State lower their threshold to allow students to be able to transfer from City College easier. I want to see that expanded with other schools in the region and work with them to make sure our students are able to move on to other higher education institutions.
Thanks, thanks. That's great. And finally, on this question, Victor.
It's a really direct pipeline from education to employment. Retrain students in the CC system, use tax incentives to get companies to let us know what they need and build public-private partnerships, leverage their resources in an endowed chair model, give us facilities, access to tech, especially counselors to guide these transitions. Then we simply build a curriculum, have a pilot, like Tom said, academic senate approval, and then place the students in those jobs, which will diversify the companies and pay them a good paying salary in the local company.
Thanks, Victor. Have we got time? I think we're going to try to do two more, two more questions, which is, I'm excited about. This question, you know, so the other, this, we'll start this round with Chanel. You know, the other major headline that has been, in addition to the pandemic and the economic impact, has been racial justice. And I, we think a lot about the role of various institutions can play in helping achieve racial justice outcomes, and I know for for our Democratic Clubs in particular, this is an issue that is very meaningful to us. And we'd love to have you all speak to what is City College's role in achieving greater racial justice in San Francisco? So Chanel, you're first.
Awesome. Thank you. So I think it first starts with listening to Black and Brown and API folks and really hearing from them directly about what will it take for them and what would that look like for them. I know that I often hear in doing this work in my day job with UCSF that there's often this burden on folks of color to have to carry that and really wanting to work with our white allies to take the lead. I think at City College, really investing in training, whether that's anti-black racism training, cultural bias and humility training, we have not done that, and we need to do that immediately. We have a robust social justice program, and we need to expand on that, but I think really it starts with all of us having those hard conversations and really listening to the folks that are impacted, our Black and
Thanks, Chanel.
Our folks. Yeah, thank you.
Anita, and then Alan and Alia.
There is an IDST 80 series that we could really implement, that is already there on the books that we should really broadcast, and that could address some of the problems. We need to fully fund ethnic studies. It was something that I believed in when I was a student, and I went on strike for it. We want ethnic studies. We want the EOP. We just have to keep it at City College. It's 50th year of African-American studies. They need to have two full-time faculty, and there are a number of other demands that the students are bringing forward that we really need to seriously consider. They can lead the way, but we have to do the work.
Perfect on the timing. Alia, Tom, and then Han.
Thank you. So I actually just had a listening session with the BSU, and they talked about how they want a fully funded African-American resource center, so that's incredibly important. We need to look at the diversity of staff at City College. It is predominantly white, so we need to diversify faculty there, and hopefully repealing Prop 209 will help with hiring practices at the college, and we need to invest in our ethnic studies classes and make sure that we're prioritizing these groups that have been forgotten about.
Thank you. Tom, Han, and then Victor.
Thank you. I mean, I just want to say I am proud to serve on a Board of Trustees that is led by a Black queer woman who grew up in this city. Thank you, Chanel. I'm so grateful for your leadership. And then backing what other people said, our faculty diversity needs to be significantly improved. We need dedicated resources for our student resource centers that serve Black students, undocumented students, our Asian students. We need to prepare associate degrees for transfer in our diversity studies tracks so students can actually study racial justice at City College, then transfer to
That's great, Tom. Thank you. Han, Victor, and then Jeanette.
Thank you. I think we like to talk about how progressive we are in San Francisco, but we've seen during this pandemic and even before that, that everything disproportionately in this city harms our Black residents and our Latinx residents. I think the main thing that City College, a big role it can play is outside of the classroom. A lot of these communities look to City College as a portal for resources. I lived right around the corner from the Chinatown campus. I would see seniors, API seniors who live in SROs, low-income, limited English speaking, they go there for resources. When I worked at Asian Law Caucus, we did outreach there.
Thanks, Han.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Victor and Jeanette.
Thanks, Afrim. We need systemic investment, and that has just simply not happened in years at City College. We're facing a racial educational gap that has not improved in years. It starts with the San Francisco Unified School District, but there's a lot we could do at City College. We need to systematically fund counselors, peer-to-peer counseling, career counselors, first-generation counselors. We need to fight systemic forces with systemic solutions, actively recruit students to come to City College, people of color. We need to actively recruit diverse faculty members, and we need to absolutely fund centers, and the programs that these students are going to need to be supported.
Thanks, Victor. We'll go Jeanette and Alan. You'll go last, sorry for going out of order. So Jeanette.
I agree with what's been said about needing to make sure that we're listening to the Black and Latinx communities about what they need in increasing their resource centers. However, I think this question also just comes back to where is the money going to come for that? Where are we going to get that from, right? There isn't any money. So I think we need to focus again on creating more private partnerships and private donations, and I think this is a great opportunity to shame the big companies in our backyard a little bit, that they need to, you know, to provide more services to City College. They need to hire more City College graduates and put their money where their mouth is in their own backyard.
Great, thanks. All right, Alan, bring us home on this question.
The college is the last stop for students to be able to get a second chance. Once people get out of high school, City College is really the only place where they can make a transition, and to do this, we must make sure that we help the young people there be able to accelerate and succeed by helping support with student support services, making sure that their basic needs are taken care of so that they are able to not be worrying about stuff at home while they're trying to get an education. In addition, we must diversify the college and make sure that we have faculty that reflect our students so that students can excel because they see mentors like themselves, and we must African-American studies program. Thank you.
This has been great. We've got one final question for all of you. This time, we will start, we will start this time with Han. You all have made me very proud to be a San Francisco Democrat. I think we all have a lot of reasons to be proud to be San Francisco Democrats right now. This is an election. We cannot vote for all of you as much as many of us may want to. So, you know, what's one thing, if we, many of us are going to leave this meeting, and we're going to go back to our club's endorsement processes, we're going to receive our ballots in less than two months. What should the, what should the one takeaway be about you as a candidate that we remember? And when we step in those endorsement meetings and our CR ballot, what do we, what do you want us to remember about you? And we'll start with Han.
Thank you. Well, thank you again all for having me. I'll try to get to the start of 30 seconds. I think for me, you know, I've spent my entire career working to bridge the gap between API Black and Brown communities. I think right now, more than ever, we were seeing what happens when powers that be pit our communities against each other. Higher education played an instrumental role in me being, even being here, being able to speak English, being able to be on the Zoom. So I would love to have your support, and you know, all of these candidates are fantastic. I'm thrilled to be running with everyone here.
Thanks, Han. We'll go Thanks, Han. We'll go Victor, Jeanette, and Chanel.
Thanks, Ephraim. The three things I would say is that my plans are sustainable and solid. I have done this before and have succeeded, so I know how to do it. And I will put students first and I will make sure that our budget is a moral budget.
Thanks, Victor, Jeanette, Chanel, Anita.
I will say I've been working in consumer protection for 15 years on the rights of individuals and student loan and student issues. I care very deeply about making sure that everybody has fair access to education. I also think we need some new thinking about City College. We've been doing the same thing year after year and, you know, I think there's many great candidates here. But we do need to have a change and some new thinking about how we make more with less. We need to figure out how to get the finances in order. And the money isn't going to come from the city, so remember that.
Perfect. Thank you. Chanel, Anita, and then Alan.
Great. So this has just been a great experience. I'm going to list off my endorsements and to get to do that earlier. So I have the mayor's endorsement, all of the board of supervisors, Speaker Pelosi, Assembly Member Ting, Assembly Member Chu. Pretty much all of our elected leadership in the city, which speaks to me being a trusted and respected leader. And it's been a hard fight at City College. I think that three and a half years is not enough time with the issues that we faced at City College for many, many years. And you'll have with me someone that's dedicated, that's been committed for eight years, that's committed to make the hard decisions and really continue to look at the structural changes.
Thanks, Chanel.
Thank you.
Anita, Alan, Aya.
Okay, I bring 40 years of commitment and experience in higher education derived from my days at NIF at San Francisco State and the Student Strike. That's unique to me. I have insight that I can share with the rest of the board members. I think that's important because, you know, there's, City College is a very complicated structure. Our regulations are very complicated. Our budget is complicated. I know how all of those things work together and I hope that I can be one of the seven members on the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Anita, Alan, Aya, and then Tom. Alan?
I was born and raised in San Francisco and my entire family went to City College. I've been doing the work of ensuring that City College is supported by drafting the free City College legislation for the next decade and also expanding City College into the sunset run free. I have experience and I'm willing to work everybody to make sure City College succeeds. Because my dad has been laid off and it's important to all of us to support our laid-off workers in the city at this time.
Thanks, Alan, Aya, and then Tom.
Thank you. So I would say I have the lived experience, the demonstrated commitment to education and the passion to serve our college. I have a unique lens where I am implementing the Free City College program, so doing the day-to-day operations to make this program successful. And diversity in our elected bodies is important. If elected, I would be the first Muslim woman in the history of San Francisco to be elected. So diversifying our elected bodies is incredibly important, too. Thank you.
Thanks, Aya. Tom, you're up.
Sure. Thank you again all for having us today. I guess I would say because I've done the work the last four years, as I said, I've helped secure a billion dollars in revenue. I've championed policies to support trans students and undocumented students. I built relationships with the college community and the external stakeholders who were going to need to solve our revenue crisis. And we're in the middle of a pandemic and a recession. We need people who know how to hit the ground running and I've been doing it for the last four years and would like to do it for four more and see us through these times.
Thanks, thanks, Tom. I think that was, that was everybody. So thank you all so much. One, for honoring our time today. Really, really appreciate it. I know I learned something. I hope the other attendees did as well. So at this point, can we get Bob back? If you wouldn't mind returning all of our candidates, our City College Board candidates to attendee mode and promoting our school board candidates. That would be excellent. And as that's happening, I just want to say, again, I am just so excited to be a San Francisco Democrat, not only because San Francisco Democrat is now the vice president nominee. And just I think all the articles we've seen lately around the power of San Francisco Democrats have, but also just listening to all the passion and intelligence and excitement we have from these candidates. So as we get the school board candidates up, I just want to say, as you heard from my intro, if you're here at the beginning, I have two little kids. School board is definitely something I'm thinking a lot about, about their education. And this is a big issue in the city, especially now as we think about what we should be doing in the course of coming out of the pandemic. Our school board is going to have to think about how to reopen our schools, how to think about online and in-person education. So I was going to have to think about how it is that students end up in different schools and how we ensure that the curricula that are, is at the school addresses the needs for students and that they can receive the services they need, they can fulfill their education.
All right, I count five. I think we have all five.
All right, Bob, thank you so much for helping make that happen. So same format as we did with City College. Each candidate will have two minutes. I'll be keeping time religiously and I, after two minutes, we'll have time for some Q and A. So for our attendees, if there's a question that you have that you did not hear our candidates answer, please put it in the Q and A. Again, in the Q and A section at the bottom of your screen, or you can type it directly to Alex Wong, who is feeding me questions to make sure that we get them answered for you. So the order will go for this, just get my screen here, will go Alita, Jenny, Matt, as the first three. So Alita, you're up first and your two-minute start whenever you're ready.
Hi. Good evening, everyone. I'm Alita Fisher, running for Board of Ed. And the reason I'm here is my four children. In the 15 years I've been an active parent with the school district, my four kids have been at seven different schools. I'm a former foster parent and an adoptive parent. All my kids are African-American. And so these past 15 years have really been just an education in my white privilege. My mom was a teacher, my grandmother was a teacher. And when my third kid got to school, he got identified with special needs. And so understanding the process of special education and navigating that process was really what took me from being an active parent to a parent activist. I've chaired our community advisory committee for special education. I sit on our LCAP task force, which is all about budget oversight. I'm on our equity studies task force. And our charter school oversight committee, I'm currently on the reopening task force. I'm a total data nerd. I am that parent who goes to all the board meetings. I have public comments on just about everything and I've read most of the policies. And so now it's time to take it to the next level. Now it's time to, instead of commenting on the policies, I want to be in the room where it happens, as Alexander Hamilton would have, you know, or Aaron Burr would have said. It's time to start crafting the policies and making sure that they're inclusive and they support our most marginalized students. It's time to look at our budgets as value statements and make sure that when we're, especially now, in such a time when we've got a reduced budget, making sure that we're really funding our top priorities, which are our students with special needs, our most marginalized students, our students experiencing homelessness and extra challenges, especially in this COVID pandemic. So that's why I'm running.
Thank you. Next up is Jenny and then Matt, then Kevin.
Hi, everyone. Thanks. I had to unmute myself there. Good evening. I am Jenny Lamb and I currently serve on the school board. Thank you to all the co-hosts of the clubs this evening and its members for the opportunity to participate. From chairing the finance to budgeting committee to passing critical groundbreaking resolutions and policies while on the school board, I've really been at the center of those decisions. And particularly now before us, the school district's COVID response and how we must provide steady principal leadership and working towards an improved plan as we face the long road to the pandemic and the recovery ahead of us. I am running for school board for reelection because I have a deep connection to public schools. I'm a product of public schools myself, including to be the first in my family to go to college. And as a daughter of immigrants and English learner myself, and having two children in the public schools now going into my 12th year, all the policies and work are really grounded in my also lived experience. Two things about what the club has asked for information about proposals for student instruction this fall, really, we need to be doing better. We need to focus on distance learning to be better, professional development for our educators and supports for our parents and students, so that needs to be in place. We also need to make sure that that robust continuity of distance learning is that we have a plan and that we hold ourselves accountable to those outcomes for our students and that it's student-centered and that we have to continue and address, must address that achievement and opportunity gap that has been persistent for so many decades. And of course, holding health, safety and wellness of our students, families and our workers first. Lastly, about the student assignment system, we have known that the student assignment system has not been working. It's caused lots of unpredictability, anxiety and stress for our families. And so there's a lot of work to be done that the district has embarked on and I am supportive of that public process. And we're going to be landing on some recommendations soon and look forward to answering more questions about that student assignment, but know that we have to approach it from a nuanced approach. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Matt, Kevin, then Michelle.
Hi, everyone. My name is Matt Alexander and I'm a teacher, a school principal and a community organizer. I'm running for school board in the midst of this pandemic and economic crisis because I actually believe that now is the moment for us to think big and be bold, to really provide the best public education system we can for the future of our children in our city. I started teaching at Balboa High School in the Excelsior neighborhood in 1996 and I spent 20 years working for SFUSD, so I really know our district inside and out. I helped lead a grassroots multiracial community organizing effort that resulted in the founding of June Jordan School for Equity, which is an innovative public high school with a really strong track record of serving Black students, Latinx students and students with special needs in particular. I served at June Jordan High School's principal for a decade and now I work as a community organizer with Faith in Action Bay Area, leading citywide campaigns for immigrant rights and housing justice. If I'm elected, it will be the first time in the history of the San Francisco public schools that we have a school board with a majority of educators, so that the people who have done the work are the ones leading the work. Let me give you an example of why this matters. Here, in one of the wealthiest cities on the planet, we still spend only about half per student of what New York City public schools spend. And within our district, our budget, we only allocate about half of our spending to classroom instruction, that is teachers and paraprofessionals who work directly with children. And those are some of the reasons why we're not producing the results that we need to. Let me quickly answer the questions you asked. The school assignment system I would propose would not use school choice as a remedy for inconsistent school quality. Most parents want a safe, high-quality school near their, near their home and our job is to make sure that all of our schools meet that standard. My proposal for student instruction this fall would include opening schools as soon as safely possible in person, especially for younger children, students with special needs and others for whom distance learning doesn't work. I'd be honored if you would endorse, if you would support me in this, in the struggle to make our public schools the best possible and to reflect the progressive values the city really stands for. Thank you.
Thanks, Matt.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Kevin Bogus. I'm running for the Board of Education. The reason I'm running is for the last 10 years, I've worked at Coleman Advocates for Children and Youth. Coleman Advocates is an organization that's been in San Francisco for 45 years, working on education equity issues. I mean, it's really been a driving force around some of the policies the school district has passed to really address the achievement and opportunity gaps facing Black and Brown students in the school district. During my time at Coleman, where I'm currently the policy director, I've worked on campaigns to expand college access A through G to students in the school district. I've worked to increase funding for credit recovery, such as summer school and night school for students who've fallen behind. I've worked to expand and protect ethnic studies and equity studies in the district. And I've also worked to deal with the criminalization of students and to prevent the unnecessary suspension of Black and Brown students in our public schools. As someone who grew up in San Francisco, who was a graduate of public schools here, I've seen firsthand what's possible in our public schools. And I've also seen how our public schools can fail students and let them fall through the cracks. During my time at Coleman Advocates, I've been lucky enough to work with families, to advocate for students and their right to education and to stay in schools and to get the supports they need. I've been able to work with teachers and educators to increase supports that they need to successfully work with families. And I've also worked with the classified staff members to ensure that they have the protective equipment they need to keep our schools safe during this time period. So for me, I'm really interested in how do we keep the school district accountable and transparent in what they're doing and really centering on the classroom and the families. My proposal for student instruction for the fall would be to increase the number of student supports and making sure all of our high-needs students get what they need to be successful in this crisis moment. And my priorities for rethinking the school assignment system are really about how do we reduce segregation in our schools and really increase equitable access for everyone. And I would appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you. And Michelle, you can finish up.
Great. Thank you so much. I'm so happy to be here with all of you tonight. I am running for the school board because I believe that it is our job to make sure that every single student in our district experiences a high-quality education. And I believe it's the school board's job to set the policies and oversee the work that creates the conditions for each and every single one of our students to have a great experience and be ready to launch into success in the world. I believe that our public schools, if done right, can end ignorance and hate in our communities and strengthen our communities, creating opportunities for economic mobility. I'm a parent of three SFUSD students. I have been a parent, leader, advocate and organizer for about 15 years and have served in lots of different leadership roles. I was president of the district PTA, supporting about 65 schools, and I now lead all of the advocacy work there. I was co-chair of the parcel tax oversight committee for four years along with Jenny and I chair the charter school oversight committee now and have been on lots of other state-level and local committees supporting education. I've worked to implement anti-racism practices and an arts education nonprofit, supporting our schools as well over the last several years. I bring the knowledge, experience and budget experience and policy knowledge and school funding and the governance and oversight experience that we really need on our school board right now. As far as the questions go, it's absolutely the right decision for our schools to be opening with distance learning right now. Nothing is more important than the health and safety of our students, our educators and our families. And as soon as the data and science says that we can open safely without, with minimal risk to all of those folks, then we need to follow the latest guidance and do that. What we really need to do right now also is prioritize empathy. Our families are not supported, working families are not supported in our systems. And so when they are telling us that they are upset, we need to listen and work with them to find solutions. We need to value partnerships right now in this moment. And we need to make sure that in this fall, we have a lot of check-in points for feedback and iteration. And we know we learned a lot in the spring and there's a lot of good ideas out there on how we can do this better in the fall.
Thanks, Michelle.
Sure. Yeah, thanks.
Great. We've had a number of questions come in in the Q and A. We'll have time for three questions. Again, we'll go, each question will, will be, each candidate will have 30 seconds to respond. We'll start with Matt for this first question. All of you mentioned that there is frustration with the school assignment system and you indicated that we need to do something different. In 30 seconds, can you talk about what you would replace our current school assignment system with? And we'll go, order will be Matt, Kevin, Michelle, and we'll go back to Alita and Jenny. So Matt, you're first.
Not sure I can describe a student assignment system in 30 seconds, but I will say this. I think, as I said in my opening remarks, I think that the problem that we've been, that we've been using choice to solve the problem of segregation. And I don't think that's the right approach in the schools. So I think we need a school assignment system that offers some degree of choice, but also really offers high-quality schools for every single family that's, that are close to their home. And so those would be my priorities. I'd be happy to talk more details if I had more than 30 seconds.
Thanks, Matt. Kevin, what do you think? What would you replace our school assignment system with today?
I guess I would just echo Matt in saying that I think that the big issue is we have a limited amount of high-quality, high-end demand schools and just really wanting to fix that dynamic. So families feel that whatever school they get assigned, they feel comfortable in. I think a big thing for me with all that the district does is how do we create more transparency in what's happening? Right now, the student assignment system seems confusing on purpose, so people don't take advantage of the system, which I think makes it hard for people to really navigate it and access it.
Thank you. Michelle, you're up.
Yeah, so the district has proposed several concepts that all sort of revolve around these, these cluster zones. And I actually, it's something that I was proposing two or three years ago before that was coming up. And, and I think that what's important about the priorities that we have set right now are around the diversity. And, and I think that what's important about the priorities that we have set right now are around the diversity. It's super important. I completely agree with that. But this system is so hard for our families to navigate. We really need the predictability incorporated into it. And we need to make it easier for people to go to schools closer. In order to make it easier to participate for families, we need to support.
Great, Michelle.
Impact and lots of other things. Again, 30 seconds is so short.
I know. I think we're trying to get a sense as much as we can. We'll go Alita and then Jenny, school assignment system.
Yeah, the joint advisory committees, we've been advocating for more equity in our schools for years. Our schools in the Bayview in particular don't have the same language pathways, programs, the special ed programs that schools in the northeast or northwest part of the city. We need to get away from our paper. We need to move digital. But if we build it, they will come. If we put equity into our schools, until we do that, we're going to have families gaming the system. Whatever student assignment system we have in place will get gamed until we have equitable schools.
Thanks, Alita. All right, Jenny, you're last on this question.
I just want to open up with that the student assignment system will not solve our equity issues that we have in the district. As far as practicality, what's that look like? I support the mid-range of the attendance zones, the second concept that we've talked about as a board. I'm also interested in, in making sure that our immersion, language immersion programs, as well as our K eights are actually folded into those zones so that there are more access to a broader base of schools. And also again, modernizing, like Lita said, of our education, student education placement center. And that it must make it more accessible and easier for our families to navigate.
Thank, thanks Jenny. I have another question here. And this question, we will start with Michelle. There's been a lot of talk about pods as a way that many families are able to provide education for their students, their children and childcare. Of course, the idea of a private pod is, is not something that's equally accessible. Not every family can afford this. And, you know, with two little kids, I could feel, I feel this pain all the time now. What should, what will you do on the board of, for the school board to ensure that the pandemic does not exacerbate inequality among students and families specifically as relates to their performance and learning?
Thank you. So I think the reason why we have parents forming these pods, you know, and of course, there's a lot of different kinds. There's the instructional ones with teachers. There's ones that are more around childcare. There's a lot of different versions of these. But what people are telling us is that they're desperate for help and solutions. And they're telling us the systems aren't working for them. And so we have to make sure that inequities aren't exacerbated in this crisis. And so the way we do that is by having systems support families. And so we need to work with our city partners, with the community learning hubs that DCWAYF has proposed. We have a lot of nonprofits who are working to help. And that doesn't mean they have to all be in person, but what we do know is that our families need support. So we have to have coordinated efforts through the district, through city partners for virtual and in-person as appropriate and safe.
Thanks, Michelle. Alita, Jenny, then Matt.
Well, I think first of all, it's important to recognize that spring crisis learning is not what fall distance learning is going to look like. You know, the instructional day will be longer. We're providing 15,000 laptops and hotspot, or Chromebooks and hotspots to our pre-K, early ed up through second grade students. So there will be more access. I absolutely agree. Everyone needs more support. This is, this is crisis, right? You know, this is, we're choosing between the, what sucks less here, right? But I encourage families to make sure you're coordinating with your schools first. Our teachers have been doing so much work over the summer to prepare.
Thanks, Alita. Appreciate it. Matt, Kevin, I don't know, sorry, Jenny, Matt and Kevin.
Thank you. First and foremost, that families are desperate for support, as Michelle had mentioned, and that we must be able to be responsive to that. And that includes building community supports at the school, school site level. But we also need to ensure that we have the resources and the funding, that we cannot do this alone. We absolutely need the city and continue that partnership with the city agencies, but also a longer-term investment to address those inequities. And then I want to also be clear about the different supports for younger students and young learners versus what supports are needed for our older students like in high school.
Great, Jenny. Matt and then Kevin.
So yeah, these privatized pandemic pods, to me, are a form of disaster capitalism in slow motion. I mean, it's really undermining our public institutions. But I think that's on us. And I think SFUSD needs to do a much more proactive job of creating cohorting opportunities for families. The district's been resisting this, even when school communities have been trying to innovate in an equitable fashion. District attorneys and others have put the brakes on. I think we need to be much more bold, solve the liability problems and really support school communities that are trying to do cohorting in an equitable fashion.
Great. Thanks, Matt. Kevin, bring us home.
Yeah, I mean, I think I agree with a little bit of what everyone said. I think the big thing for me is the pods kind of represent the lack of trust families have in the school district to educate their kids in this moment. I mean, how do we actually close that gap? A lot of my work at Coleman Advocates is really centered around families who feel like that pre-pandemic, right? And that's really exemplified in this moment of people feeling like I don't have access to anything I need to be successful. So for me, I think it's important that parents feel they have the flexibility to do what they need to do to educate their kids. But I feel the school district needs to feel like they are in competition with all these different learning hubs and private schools provide the best education possible to students here.
Thanks, Kevin. Y'all have been great with the time, so I really appreciate that. We've got one last question for all of you, and then we will wrap up our school board component. SFUSD has had a budget, budget challenges before the pandemic. The pandemic has only exacerbated that challenge. And yes, there are, you know, measures on the ballot to help us get more funding for schools. But we may have to be making challenging cuts. What are the criteria, or what are some of the criteria that you will use to evaluate which programs we may, which budget lines we may have to reduce if that time were to come? And we'll start this time with Michelle.
Okay, twice in a row. Okay, so when, well, I hope that we are not having to make cuts because we, I prefer to focus on finding new revenue. And I have a couple of things I can mention quickly about that. But if we do have to make cuts, keep them far from the classroom, we should be prioritizing keeping full-time staff whole rather than, you know, other outside contracts and things like that. But I do want to talk about revenue because I think there are some creative ways. We can be looking at the tax expenditures, work with our state legislators, that all three state legislators have endorsed me. Want to work with them to identify tax credits that we can get rid of that benefit primarily the wealthy. There's also small line items in the state budget that are basically giveaways to corporations that we can repurpose to help with some of the telecommunications costs that SFUSD needs subsidized so we can provide wifi to our students.
Thanks, Michelle. Alita, then Jenny.
This is my jam. This is where my data nerdiness comes in. I, I, all of my work with special education has been around collaboration. I'm actually a special education in my day job. And so I've been doing a lot of work with the district to build programs internal in SFUSD that we've currently, we have to send kids out to non-public schools in order to get their educational needs met. And the amount of outside contracts and outside placements we have is in the millions of dollars. And it's plus a very traumatic experience for a student or a family to have to leave the district. So.
Great, Alita. Thank you. Jenny, Matt, then Kevin.
As the Chair of the Budget and Finance Committee, I helped lead a process to ensure that our budget and finance really stayed whole at the school, at the, in the classrooms, at the school sites as much as possible. And so because of our work as a board, we are able to bring back $10 million back to classrooms and ensuring that that stayed less impact on, on students. The other aspect is really again, how are we evaluating the programs that we invested in and what impact have they had? And if they are not making the impact of achieving, of addressing the achievement opportunity gap, then we need to shed those. And of course, we need to go after revenue both locally. We have an opportunity to redo the, the parcel tax this fall. So thank you.
Matt, and then Kevin.
So when I was working as a high school principal, I organized with other principals because we couldn't figure out where all the money was going in the district. And we discovered that our district spends only 54% of its general fund budget on classroom instruction, which is the lowest among any of the 10 largest school districts in the state of California. And so there's plenty of places that we can cut away from the classroom. I think Jenny and the current board have done an awesome job of keeping that. I think there's even more we can do if we really dig deep into the budget. We can put a lot more money into the classroom and make cuts from other places.
Thanks, Matt.
In the budget. Thank you.
All right, Kevin, you're, you're last.
Yeah, I, I think for me, the first place to start is, is there any excessive money going to senior level administrators, the superintendent, that we can kind of start to shave to make sure nothing gets cut into the classroom? I think what I've seen in good budget times is schools having to choose between having social workers and literacy coaches. And I think we really have to get out of that habit and say, this is how much it costs for us to have school? And what are we going to do to kind of make that happen? Whether we're requiring families or community members to step up and volunteer to kind of fill some of these budgetary gaps that we're facing.
Great, thanks. Thank you, Kevin. Just want to say thank you to all of our school board candidates. You guys, again, may be proud to be a San Francisco Democrat. So that is, that's really, I'm grateful for you taking the time to spend with us today. Like I said, for the city college board candidates, you're probably running campaigns in a way you did not expect to run right now. And I just really appreciate you all for your commitment and your passion for this. Bob, back as, as I keep talking, if you wouldn't mind saying bye to our candidates and making them attendees again and bringing up our D3 candidates, Spencer and Danny. So they get a chance to say a few words. As, as we do that, what I will say, and I was telling, encouraging people that should come to this, I was saying, you know, where did both of, are both of our candidates for president and vice president started in local office? And then, of course, I was reminded that neither of them started on the city college, or community college or school board. But Joe Biden did start on the city council. And there is, you know, I think all politics is local. We know this moment, I think reinforces the nature of importance of local government. And so I'm, I'm excited to have a couple of our candidates for D3. Just for everyone, we did reach out to the Peskin campaign. The campaign never got back to us to participate. So we want to make sure that Spencer and Danny, who are two of the other candidates in the race, each had a couple of minutes to speak to our clubs as we consider our, our respective endorsement processes. So we will go, Spencer, you'll have two minutes and then Danny, you will have two minutes to talk to us. So Spencer, whenever you're ready to start.
Awesome. So thank you for inviting me. As you've probably known, D3 hasn't gotten much attention because there is an incumbent running. So it's been a little bit difficult for both Danny and myself. I'm Spencer Simonson. I'm running for the D3 supervisor seat this year. This is my first time, my first foray into politics. My background has been in low-income financing and legal aid and legal services here in San Francisco. And now I'm in senior and disability services. And so in each one of those areas, I've kind of had an interesting perspective as far as how do you help these groups of individuals we do have living in San Francisco? How to help them live paycheck to paycheck? Or how to help them with their legal rights here in San Francisco? Even how to help them get transportation in our city? So that's my background. That's what I want to bring to City Hall. I want to bring a perspective of using these different resources and optimizing these resources. I think one of the main issues that we really have in City Hall is we like to pump more money into the city and hope that it turns out the best. And I think that's going to be really difficult, especially in the years coming up. You know, we're going to have a huge deficit. They've already projected what, $10 billion as far as loss of revenue for tourism? And so we're really going to need to know how that money is spent and optimize that money to get the solutions that we want to help people in our city. We don't want to be cutting things in the school district. We don't want to be cutting transportation. We want to make sure that we are still supportive of all those things. But to do that, we really need to optimize how we spend San Francisco money and use different programs and different technology to actually create the outcomes that we want. That's my intro.
Thanks, thanks Spencer. Danny, you have two minutes whenever you're ready.
Sure. Thanks, Ephraim. Nice to be with everyone tonight. Nice to see you all. I, I kind of came in at the end of your introduction, Ephraim, but I hope you were not making any comparison to the president, the vice presidents, myself or Spencer, certainly not Supervisor Peskin. But I like the spirit of your introduction and that is exactly it. This year, you know, everyone is going to be paying attention to the election. But we are, you know, we are really trying to remind, and I, and I know that Eastern Neighborhood Democratic Club is trying to remind folks of what, what is happening here in District 3, what's happening on the east side and how important that is. Little bit of my background, my background is in community organizing. And that starts with my professional work. I'm the Executive Director of a nonprofit called Neighborhood Centers Together, which has the, the privilege of working with seven of our community centers here in San Francisco. Two of them happen to be in District 3. So I get to spend a lot of time with those community centers and learning about the individuals that they serve. And that work, I think, has been more important than ever in the, in the past few months. Also coming to this race with a background in neighborhood organizing through North Beach Neighbors, the Neighborhood Association that I've had the fortune of being the president of for the past three years. And really with that, trying to, trying to listen to neighbors and trying to respond to what the neighborhood needs, what it wants, sometimes because a neighborhood is, a neighborhood association is the one that should do that work. Sometimes frankly, because the current leadership hasn't done that work. So we've done everything there from starting a community farmer's market to fighting for senior housing despite opposition in the neighborhood. In the recent months, in the midst of COVID-19, we launched a, a neighborhood delivery program that partners with restaurants. If I'm a little bit out of breath, it's because I was just biking up Russian Hill Thursday night is our delivery night where we're doing free delivery for restaurants. We've helped, that program has helped generate $50,000 in revenue for neighborhood businesses since we started it. So really exciting, but.
Thanks, thanks Danny.
Sure, sure.
Two minutes, I know. It goes quick. I, I do want, if we haven't, you know, I want to reserve two minutes or so for any questions people have. I don't have any questions in the, in the chat or in the Q and A. I'm able to give a 15 seconds for someone to type in a question. And then we will see what comes up. Austin, I see your question. I don't know if I want to ask it.
I'd be happy to take a, take a run at it.
I think maybe a, one of the questions we asked other candidates, and so I think we can ask, ask you, ask it this way. For the folks who are in D3, they're going to have a number of people on the ballot. They're going to get to rank them. Why should they rank you number one? What's the, what, you know, what, what's that one thing you want people to leave this with? And we'll start with Danny, since we started with Spencer before.
Sure. I think it's a question of if you're happy with the status quo. It's a question of, you know, we've had someone in office for four terms now going for their fifth term. And if you're happy with the neighborhoods, how they look, how they're performing, then, then go ahead and continue to vote for that direction. But if you're frustrated like I am and like so many others are, then it's time for a change. It's time for a community organizer, not a career politician, to be in District 3.
Short and sweet. Thanks, Danny. Spencer, same question to you.
Yeah, so I think one of the reasons is because Aaron Peskin has been in this office for so long. We haven't had any new ideas introduced into this office. I think he's kind of supported the same kind of old ideas in San Francisco as far as not building housing, not increasing our housing stock. And so I think that's extremely important. I think we need someone in City Hall for this position who can actually do the things that they, that the city needs. And again, going back to my introduction, when I was talking about, we're going to have a massive deficit in the next few years. It's going to obliterate a lot of the services here we have in San Francisco, especially with the reduction in tourism. We need to be prepared for that.
Thanks, Spencer. Appreciate it. Yeah, I tried to keep it short because I know we said we'd be done at 7:30 and we were able to squeeze a couple of extra candidates in. So with that, I think we're going to, we're going to wrap up here. I just want to thank all of our candidates, all the attendees. I'm really honored that we were able to hold this with the Willie B. Kennedy Democratic Club, the Edward Emily Asia Pacific Credit Club, United Democratic Club, as well as My Home Club, ENDC. I think when we can do things together, that's where our power gets, gets magnified. And I, I know I learned a lot about the candidate.